That's helpful, thank you. All right, well, we will start our work session. We are on Facebook Live. This is, this will be our work session in preparation for our July the 21st meeting, which is our recess meeting for, and our final meeting for the month of July, or we think it's our final meeting for the month of July. So what I'll do is, we'll see who all is here, either remotely or in person. We certainly can see two Aldermen, but we'll see who might be on remote and then we'll call meeting to order and it is, it obviously doesn't have to have a quorum because we, this is a work session, but we like to see who's with us. So Ms. Harden, if you would do that for us, that'd be great.
Alderman Carver. Alderman Sistrum.
I do know she's on her way, so she's gonna be here in person shortly.
Alderman Little. Alderman Walker.
I'm here, good morning, everyone.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Alderman Beatty.
Here.
Vice Mayor Perkins. Alderman Barnes.
Here.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that in mind, we have a couple of presentations this morning for us to be looking at, and we're gonna start with Retail Strategies. Ms. Jennifer Gregory is here, representing Retail Strategies. She works for them, and there's Alderman Sistrum. She works for them and has just come back to California where I understand the temperature is significantly nicer than it is here, or cooler than it is here. So she's gonna give us an update on the retail recruitment in the area and what all is going on. So Jennifer, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, your humidity was a lot less, that's for certain. So we are gonna be pulling up a quick presentation. I know you guys have a lot of business to get to, so we won't take too much of your time today, but really appreciate the opportunity to come share with you guys a little bit about what's going on in retail nationally, but also in your community. Thank you so much. And, you know, obviously there are concerns about just all the news that's happening, about bankruptcies, enclosures happening. It seems like just about, you know, every week. In fact, we've been tracking about two to three per week of national, of national chains that are announcing bankruptcies or closures of some sort, reorganizations. Many of those don't have that starfall, but some of them do. So I wanted to go through some of those and then also just kind of answer any questions that you guys may have. First, you know, I did wanna kind of remind you guys about our partnership a little bit. You know, we have been a partner of the city of Starkville for, I think, about six years. In fact, I was part of the original group that hired Retail Strategies when I was at the partnership. And so it has been a long partnership. Now, kind of being on a client, being on the client side, and now on the other side, it's been really interesting to see just how Starkville's market really does compare to others that are of our kind. And so, you know, one thing that I did wanna let you know is that the attention that Starkville is getting right now is probably more than ever in terms of retail interest and overall recruitment. And that might seem kind of illogical or confusing, but really, the main reason, and we'll get into it in just a second, is the availability of real estate. For a while, talking about large-scale retail spaces, so not necessarily, you know, spaces on Main Street, not necessarily these mixy's development spaces, but talking about big boxes like JCPenney, like Bargain High, places like that, there just hasn't been any inventory. So for a long time, we've heard of all the brands that have been looking and have been interested, but there hasn't been really ideal real estate for them to go in. So if there is a silver lining at all of the situation we find ourselves in, it is that real estate is becoming available and more and more brands that are ideal for Starkville are showing an interest in our community. So let's kind of look at, you know, what has closed, what we think might be at risk of closing, which national brands are expanding, and then how we intend to continue helping you guys make sure that sales tax revenue stays robust and also that there are no vacancies, as is the goal entirely. Also, I have to stay updated for some reason. Yeah, that's okay. Also, I wanna remind you guys that, you know, it is a little bit, you know, it's important to really recognize how retail recruitment works in terms of a local level and a national level. So for example, you know, we found ourselves with a number of vacancies in the downtown area, which is frightening for everyone, of course, and something that is not good for our local business economy, for other neighbors that own those businesses, and also just for progress and in the economy going forward. Our purview is really to focus on national retail. And the reason is that, you know, there is a network for that type of recruitment and relationships. Tenant reps, real estate directors, all represent these specific national brands that we have relationships with, that we can put qualified communities and sites in front of and say, you know, we think that this community meets your needs, will you look at this site? On a local level, there are still some things that we can do. Mr. Taggart at the partnership and I have been in touch about kind of our efforts to promote the available sites on Main Street, working with those property owners to make sure they're comfortable with that first, but then kind of sending out a blast to our network of regional tenants. So for example, you know, and I can't unfortunately, because it's public media, I can't really name specific brands or tenants, but if there was a restaurant that we felt like would be a terrific fit for downtown Starkville, that might be headquartered out of Oxford, or Two Forest, or Birmingham. Likely, we have a strong relationship with their, with their real estate director. So we would make contact with them and put that site in front of them. So we will most definitely do that, but in terms of, you know, downtown development, it's really focusing on entrepreneurship. And the partnership, the city and the university, has done such a terrific job of prioritizing that, which certainly needs to continue, but also really focusing on the vitality of downtown. And so things like having outdoor dining, things like making it convenient and easy for people to do business with the businesses that are on Main Street is really critical. Like the mayor said, I was just in Northern California for a week, and, you know, even though they have very large municipalities, they also have a lot of small towns. I was in a town that has about 1,200 people, and their outdoor dining was at capacity. Their governor just put in an order of closing all indoor dining when we were flying out there, but outdoor dining was at capacity. And so being a southern state where the weather gets hot, but it's not snowing a lot of the year, Starkville really is at a position to take advantage of that. And so we would encourage you guys to continue what you're doing to kind of reimagine the public space however you can, to invite people to do business with our downtown businesses. So I wanna commend you for the work that you're doing there. The partnership obviously is working very hard on downtown utilization and development, but downtown Starkville really isn't a candidate for national retail at this point by and large, and you probably don't want national retail on your, on your Main Street, of course. So it is a balance. We are, we recognize that and we are working on that. I just kind of wanted to differentiate that it's not just like, you know, cherry picking a business and say, hey, come to downtown Starkville. It is more complex in a downtown setting. What we are seeing, though, in terms of closures, you know that JCPenney and Fordman has announced the closure of their Starkville locations. That does present a really unique opportunity for us. And during quarantine, in fact, we were busier than ever putting those sites in front of, in front of tenants that we have heard you identify that you want and that we certainly see on Twitter a lot. Leases have not been signed yet, but a lot of positivity is happening there, and we feel really confident that those spaces, you know, will be filled. Some tenants to watch, and I wanna be careful when I say, that these are national businesses that have announced that they are closing stores. Starkville has not been in the list of those closures, but there is the opportunity that there will be more announcements of closures, and that is Tuesday morning, AT&amp;T, GameStop, and GNC. So those stores have made national announcements that they are closing, you know, 200 stores, 150 stores. Starkville is not in the list of those stores. Because of our relationship with those reps, we get that list before they go public, and Starkville is not on that list. But it is in all of our best interests that we keep an eye on that and make sure that we know if there is risk there, that we start working on opportunities for backfill. So that is something that we're already doing. We hope that those stores don't close. Tuesday morning's a huge favorite of mine, and we're not saying it will, but it is something that we're watching.
And you said AT&amp;T is in the selling the phone store?
Correct. So they have announced that they are closing about 100, and I can get you some specific information from the media, but over 100 stores that they are closing, ours is not one of them, but it is something that we're just watching. And without having a free standing unit, feel really good about that, but again, just something that we are keeping an eye on. What we are seeing in terms of, you know, kind of where this is all going, is that everything is moving forward is about convenience. We don't know how long this whole went to last, but I don't know about you guys, I'm sick of cooking, we are eating out a good bit, but what we're doing is we're picking it up. In fact, you know, my husband picked up our groceries at Walmart, I ordered them when I was on the plane, he picked them up. I mean, it's just this type of lifestyle that we're all moving towards. And so what we're seeing on a national retail scale is that businesses moving forward are requiring that their real estate have drive-throughs and pickup lanes. An example is Chipotle. They are a brand that is expanding. There are kind of some struggling categories as a result of COVID, and then there are some resistant categories. Grocery stores, obviously very resistant on a national level, they're doing 20% to 30% better than before. Same thing with hardware. We've all seen the Lowe's parking lot, and hopefully our local stores have benefited from that as well, like Bell Building Supply and East City Lumber. We're seeing a lot of interest from other users in that category for the Starkville market, so that's one that's doing very well. Quick service restaurants, you know, are growing, doing exceptionally well. Fast food, basically. And then fast casual, so kind of like your nukes, places where you order and then go, you know, take your food somewhere, are picking back up. They had a very, very hard time during May. We've seen those, and prior to that, obviously, but we've seen those numbers start to pick up. Pet stores are doing very well. I guess a lot of people thought it was a good month to get a dog. Pet stores are doing very, very well, and sporting goods are starting to pick up as well. There was a really definite hit to stores like that as sports are canceled, and as, you know, camping and outdoor recreation has started to pick up, we're seeing that happen as well. Buying dining has been just, you know, obviously, it's been detrimental, and that's probably no surprise. So in terms of companies that we're seeing expanding right now, grocery, hardware, general merchandise, so places like TJ Maxx, you know, Aldi, brands like that, are opening new stores aggressively, and also that restaurant category. So Chipotle, Panera, they are opening a lot of new stores. Chipotle, moving forward, has said, yes, we're gonna open new stores, but it has to include a Chipotle lane, which is basically, you know, for drive-through, pickup, call ahead. So that's what we're seeing. Steak Shack is another, has to have that in all new deals. So really, the name of the game in terms of real estate is gonna be flexibility. So we are inventorying what is currently in Starkville, what is vacant, and what is not vacant, but it might be at risk, to see, does that fit any of these expanding patterns? And you can see kind of on here, spreading out, convenience, outdoor space, all of these things are really important.
Jennifer, has anybody looked at the Payless location?
Yes, in fact, we have put that in front of a lot of people. You know, a difficult, and I won't say specifically to this location, but a challenge in Starkville is land prices and prices of property. It is a college town, obviously, there's a lot going on here, but that is something that we struggle with a lot when representing Starkville. You know, Starkville, excuse me, is a market that even without the students, you know, their population, as we all know, is not really counted. We hope a lot of them fill out the census, but, you know, the student population doesn't help us. But what we look at when promoting Starkville is not just the population, it's the customized trade area. So we look at self-employment activity, kind of in and out of the market, to determine who is coming here, who's spending money here, and it gives us a much larger radius than just Starkville. So think Winston County, Webster County, Platte County, and even Landes County. You know, we see a lot of people come over and shop at Kroger and things like that. So we're able to tell what the true trade area is, and that helps us in promoting Starkville because it's a much larger population. The median income, it kind of depends on what, what area we're looking at, but those are the two things that are really important to retailers, also traffic counts and kind of this drive time radii. So Starkville's an attractive market, and honestly, you know, we feel really good about being able to backfill existing vacancies on the commercial corridors, and we do have a really close eye on, you know, those at-risk tenants and subsequently those at-risk properties. Again, kind of going back to this, this type of thing remains really important for us to consider in whatever way it can happen in order to make sure that we don't see more vacancies on Main Street. Additionally, you know, in the downtown area, we know that it helps restaurants to cluster around other restaurants. I mean, I think, see that in the Cotton District, we used to see that on Main Street, we know that it can get back to that. So having that mug shots building, we have shown dozens of times. Price is an issue, the perception of parking is an issue. You know, obviously, I have my own opinions about, about parking, but when we look at in a five-minute walk time, there are a lot of parking places in downtown Starkville. Making sure that those public parking places are signed well remains important, but the city has invested in those lots, and there are places to park. And so we, we kind of continue to be that drum to those, to those tenants. So a lot happening. These are kind of the universal site metrics that retailers generally look at. Now, you know, you definitely have to add that accessibility in terms of drive-throughs, pickup, outdoor dining, all of that. There have been also a number of leases signed that we have been a part of that are, it's not our job to make those announcements, so we hope that those will come soon, but it, you know, primarily in terms of closures, you know, maybe Tuesdays is a closure, several others that I haven't, I guess, mentioned yet. We've been putting those sites in front of people, and there will be announcements forthcoming. There have been new leases signed, even in the midst of this pandemic. So I say all that to say, I know that you guys are worried about sales tax revenue, and rightly so, and especially looking at additional closures, but we feel like Starkville is in a perfect, you know, perfect spot to attract tenants that you want. And that's something else that we're, that is very important to us, is making sure that it is ideal tenants and not ones that would really reduce the quality of life or perception or reputation at Starkville. Other trends that we're seeing, you know, it is definitely a tenants market right now. So if a brand wants to expand and open a new store, you know, we're seeing that, that that's the kind of name of the game right now. It is a little bit different in Starkville because we haven't seen property prices drop yet. We don't necessarily want that, but we have seen that in other markets. So, so that's why things kind of remain in negotiations right now. Ghost kitchens is something else that is becoming a trend, and that is essentially where it's a commercial kitchen that a tenant would open for the sole purpose of providing to-go food, carryout food. So with no indoor dining, no outdoor dining, just a kitchen, commercial kitchen, and kind of a walk-up window, or somewhere to distribute that food to go style. We're seeing that in a lot more urban environments as, you know, where price per square foot is so high that it doesn't make sense anymore for them to keep their indoor dining, square footage, so they're relocating the kitchen and then trying to still do business that way. But really, in order to capture the quality of life aspect of that, it remains important that there be outdoor dining, shared dining for tenants, even ghost kitchen tenants. So that's, those are trends that we're definitely watching. And the data and analytics things that we look at are, you know, mobility of the residents and of Starkville and of the trade area. You know, overall, I think for the month of June, the mobility for retail was down about 30% in, in Oktibah County, but what we see is that, you know, when we look at retail expenditures, they're up about 7.9% for the month of June. So really, just what that means is that people are being more deliberate with their purchases. You know, they're not shopping, they're not making a day of it and going around from shop to shop, they're ordering online, picking it up and going home. So the retail numbers are encouraging, that people are starting to spend more money, and we'll continue to watch that as well. We continue to watch, you know, the categorical expenditures of, of those in the trade area. Again, groceries off the charts, hardware's off the charts, and sporting goods increasing. All of those are very good, but we remain to watch that to see if there are gaps that can be filled that are not so obvious. We do look at your sales tax revenue frequently, just to be sure that we have a pulse of exactly what's going on here. And then lastly, a big part of what we do for our partners, probably, you know, we don't spend enough time talking about this, is representing at conferences. So we would have gone to Las Vegas, to the largest real estate convention in the world, it's called RECON, where there's, you know, over 300,000 people that attend. Clearly, that didn't happen, so a lot of that has moved digital. Where that puts you guys in a great spot is that, you know, ICSC is really the top representative of retail tenants in, in the world, and RECON is one of those conferences. Most of these are not happening anymore. They're turning digital, and the only people that can get appointments with tenants are people like us, are either commercial brokerage houses, tenant reps, real estate directors, or consultants. So it becomes almost impossible for a city to say, well, I'm gonna get online and make some appointments with these tenants and try to put my community in front of them. Not happening right now. It's really been tightened up. Our, the president of our company is the chairman of the Southeastern Conference in Deal Making Convention that is set to take place in October in either Atlanta or Florida, they're combining the Florida and Southeast one, likely, I don't know, I hope they happen, I doubt it, but what is already happening is Retail Live. This is a, an event that is huge, that we're a platinum partner of, so we get to help plan this, which means that we're at the forefront of it. We're talking to these retailers every day, finding out what their trends are, what their changes are, and what we can expect. So I say that to say, communities that don't have a partner like us are basically sitting still right now. Very little is happening, so I think you're in a, you know, best-case scenario position. Things are progressing, and we feel really hopeful about the Starkville market. So I've taken too much of your time already, but are there any questions that I can answer?
Great. Sanders, since we know, okay. Alderman Walker, do you have any questions of Ms. Gregory?
No, ma'am, thank you. Thank you, Jennifer.
Sir, thank you.
Alderman Beatty?
Jennifer, right now, that student's here, what's the size of Starkville retail trade area?
Sir, what's the size of the trade area?
What do y'all consider the population wise? Is it about 80,000?
Yeah, we, we, really, the trade area kind of trends between 60 and 80,000, depending on the category, yes, sir.
What's the, what's the head level on, on lease space per square foot?
It varies significantly in Starkville. You know, Main Street, we see about 13, 14 per square foot. The mixy's properties, you know, on College View and University Drive, in the 25 range. The commercial property is right in between those two. And so the lease prices are reasonable compared to other communities that we work with, but some tenants only want to own their real estate. That's where we have trouble making deals sometimes.
Oh, there's supposedly some people like that wanting to own their real estate, the corporation wants to own it?
Yes, sir. Some brands, they're very particular.
I know, they don't, they don't have any franchise either, they're all corporate.
Right. And even, so like, for example, Walgreens is a good example, they have to own their real estate, you know? So there might be a city that says, well, you know, we'll lease you this space for a dollar, we'll do this, they're not interested, they have to own it. So, you know, we have kind of a huge catalog of what those specifications are, but even a lot of fast casual restaurants, the corporation wants to own the real estate and then the tenant gets, or the franchisee gets involved in the lease.
Now, Alderman, I know newer leases out in the strip centers, things are all triple net, or these downtown leases, most of them triple net leases also.
Most of them are, yes, sir. It just depends, and I would suspect that there would be some flexibility.
Now would be more flexible.
Perhaps, yes, sir. Just as, there's really never this kind of vacancies on Main Street. So where we're also in a terrific position is that most of the property owners on Main Street care deeply about downtown Starkville. And so they're not, you know, they will probably, and it's been the case in the past, that they'll wait as long as they can to keep it retail, you know, to fill it with a retail tenant, rather than a service-based business, which sometimes can kind of bring down the vitality of Main Street if we see less and less retail and restaurant. So I suspect that they're still in that position, but as it gets, you know, longer and longer. Also, most of the property is owned outright, so that's helpful, too. So again, I think we're in a good position there, but yes, sir, most of them are triple net.
Thank you. Alderman Walker, any questions of Ms. Gregory?
No, ma'am, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jennifer, appreciate your being here. And Mr. Taggart, did you wanna talk about anything you're doing at the partnership since we're on this subject matter beginning?
I might just ask, that we'd like to preserve the opportunity to call Retail Strategies and to think about, you know, retention. I know recruitment is always paramount, but retention, obviously, right now is really, really important. So any sort of guidance, we'll, we'll work, work with your team, but there's a lot of things going on, promotional, shop local, traditional campaigns, but we would appreciate any guidance on that.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Alrighty. All right, our next, we have, our other present, presentation is water rate options, and I say that because, if y'all recall, a couple of years ago, we had presentation from Jason Barrett, Dr. Barrett, who is not with us today, but he has, Nelson, what's your last name, Donald?
James.
Okay, sorry, thank you. He is taking Dr. Barrett's place, and Mr. Kemp is gonna, is gonna oversee this presentation to us, and then I think probably hand it off. So Terry?
Thanks, Mayor and Board, and I don't give all of this to...
Okay, well...
I do wanna talk a few things I think is very appropriate, what we just talked about then, because we are... about then, because we are planning for the future, and I would say today is kind of a continuation, as the mayor alluded to, of a discussion we started two years ago. And if when we look at growth, whether it's existing and continued to services, or new growth, utilities comes into that equation. And planning for the future involves capital investment, and capital investment needs to be targeted to the infrastructure, both of electric, water, and sewer. As the mayor alluded to it right now, she stated, well, we want to capitalize on the water and sewer side. We've got a lot of capital to invest on the electric side, and we got off to a good start on the water and sewer side. We've got projects going into wastewater. We started down that road of Pleasant Acres, and we've identified Green Oaks, we're looking at Rolling Hills. I know inside of that, we've got projects all over the city. I've took our gardens as another one, we've already teed up and started doing research on, even even South Starpole. As we get into this, and that was the approach we wanted to start, and I compliment the board and the mayor to taking that proactive approach and allowing us to really start planning down the road, we're looking today about, looking for a five-year, at least a five-year window, because that's kind of where our planning horizon are. And based on availability of dollars and funds, and that's kind of where we're going to get to, helps us identify the speed that we can get there. And although we talk about community projects, one thing you'll see as we come up through the budget process, we're already looking for a well that's going to be coming up. Here again, that goes to support our growth. And so not letting that come up and catch us at the last, we want to start planning that back.
And remind us how much that well is, Terry, a million and a half?
Million and a half.
Million, okay.
But here again, that's an indication of the community and its growth, and our commitment to ensure that if it needs to be here, we're going to be ready for it, and we're going to provide good service. We talk about aged infrastructure, that is a big area. We talked about those, we got the, the Beagle Grant, which is right down the middle of town, so it's not going to be just neighborhoods. We really want to improve and upgrade and do better things so that we can provide customers better service. That's, that's our goal.
And I don't mean to harp on it, but just a curiosity act, I haven't ever asked the question, how long does it take to, to build a well, or dig a well, or whatever we call it?
No, there's two phases to it. When we do the engineering study, make sure we find the right location, elevations and all of that, then we'll actually start the design.
Couple of years?
Couple of months in construction. You know, you're talking over a year, if you talk about the entire process, could be a year and a half, time engineering, planning, and all of that. It's kind of like Green Oaks, you know, when we started in Pleasant Acres, we started doing investigation, we're already starting doing some work up at Pleasant Acres and I took our garden. So we're trying to get out ahead of the curve and make sure that we've got good engineering studies to support what we need so that, you know, the system's good for the next 75 years. That's what we do.
Okay.
So I'm encouraged by that, but I think one thing that we did say, and I go back to that two years when we made that adjustment, and we did a little research and also made a conflict. I think it's one of the few rate changes that we've done on the water in the 20 years. This is not something we take in very, we take it very seriously, and, and we take it not just as a, it is a solution, but we work a lot of other things around it before we get there. And then what we also identified is that we wanted that rate study, or rate change, to provide funds for capital investment. So today we're going to talk about now that where the gap was, if you had to set us up, and what I would say, Donald, you're going to look into these numbers, and we're looking, and I know we're just starting that process, but I think over the next five years, we're looking for, let you, somewhere around $7.5 million.
Okay.
So it gives you an idea, but that's fairly, it's heavily loaded on the capital side, so I think I want to stress that too. So it's not about your operations, it's trying to invest back in the city. So I'll stop there and then come back unless people get you some questions.
Okay. Do you have any questions of Terry while he's, while he's in front of us before we get to the report, or to the study? Jason?
No ma'am.
And I think hearing some of our intent today is, and, and very thankful Mississippi State, they were here with us to begin with, they've worked with us over the last two years and months to refine that. It's really options and ways that we can, and change to arrive at that end, okay? So Nelson?
Thank you, Terry. All right. Morning, everyone.
Morning.
My name is, like the mayor said, Nelson Magoo. I'm a research technician with the Mississippi Water Resources Research Institute on campus Mississippi State. As Terry said, about two years ago, Dr. Barrett was tasked with studying the rates at Starpole, to come up with a rate increase to achieve capital, for these capital improvements. I joined Dr. Barrett in working on this at the beginning of this year, January of this year, and through meeting with Terry and the team over there at Starpole Utilities, we were able to gather more data, we were able to recognize the holes in our original model, really understand how the data is input into Starpole Utility System and what we're looking at when we're looking at this data. As you can imagine, it's quite a bit, it's quite a bit to go through month by month to figure out where exactly is being charged, how much is actually being used, what's an adjustment, what to do with partial months, because as you imagine, there's a lot of turnover with renters in, in Starpole, so there's quite a bit of cutoff fees and, and startup fees. So, so as a result, we're really confident in this model now, that we've had several more months to work on it, and we'll, we'll get into just what it looks like here. So this is a monthly breakdown presented by the model with the usage numbers that we received from Starpole Utilities and the current rate structure. Right here in this, in this total, that's 6.36 million, that's what the model is presenting as the annual revenue for 2018, 19. David was able to provide us with an annual revenue number that they actually did, it was about 6.4, so we're very confident with how it was tracking with the model. And if you look in this right-hand column, as you can imagine with this year, with students being born, for the second half of the spring semester, we saw quite a bit of drop in usage. For the month of April, we saw about a 6.7% drop in usage. For the month of May, we saw about 7.9% drop in usage. Now, we don't imagine that to be the case for the rest of the year, obviously, because the students are coming back this fall. This summer should be a typical summer, seeing as people are still going to be watering their lawns, population is going to be about the same. However, we do recognize the opportunity for maybe a drop in usage due to football season being augmented, less people being in town for that. So what we've done is we've applied a 5% drop to the usage throughout the year to kind of combat this and, and, and get our number to a safe place where we feel like we can still achieve the capital that we have as our goal with the rates that we apply here as a result of this study. This is a chart of your monthly revenue for water and sewer usage across a graph of your monthly usage numbers. As you can see, big, big months are July, August, September, you know, your fall months due to football seasons. So we feel confident that, that any kind of rate change that goes into effect fairly soon could, could be a very, very positive thing for capital, for revenue, for, for Starpole Utilities here at the front end. Right here on this slide, we have a breakdown of your customers due to different, different factors here. On the first plot chart you'll see on the left, that's the number of customers that use a certain amount of water per month. As you can see, the vast majority of your customers are not using very much water at all. We have about 37% of your customers using less than 1,000 gallons. So that means when you set up a rate structure, these customers are not even going to pay any of your variable rates because during that last rate change, you paid away a $3,000 on the front end of each bill with their base rate. So, so as a result, that's, that's important to look at when we're looking at each of these new rates and how it's going to affect each of these different strata of customers. And then for comparison sake, to other water systems throughout the state, we've set a benchmark of the cost of 5,000 gallons of water. The reason we came to this was because if you look at that, over 75% of your customers are using less than 5,000 gallons a month. So when we look at that number, we can safely say that the vast majority of your customers are not going to pay more than that number per month. And that's what this looks like right here. So this is Starpole, it's current rate structure. As you can see, the cost of 5,000 gallons of water is about $34. Now that's for a water and sewer setup. And as you can see, it's far below the average, it's about 28% below the average for these comparable water systems. And if you're wondering what these numbers are next to the names, that's the three base gallons that are given away with the base rate for each of those municipalities or water systems.
And Nelson, how are those comparable? What, what parameters create those as being comparable to Starpole?
Number of meters is really, really the largest thing, is also, as well as usage. So, so the size of, you know, how many meters we have in the town. So, so these are, these are the ones that we feel, and obviously Columbus is going to be the one that's most directly compared for, for regionality. As you can see, we're well within it right now, so.
He's saying that all is a mid-20 population office, right? Yeah, all 23, 25, 26, 27.
And this is water and sewer?
Water and sewer, yes.
At that point, Nelson, right now, it's just half and half.
Right.
So you divide that half to be water, so they have...
Now, I will say for each of these rate structures, that's the way the base rate is divided. So it's not, there's no extra, extra money on sewer, extra money on water, it's going to be an even split for each of these base rates. So I came up with four options here. The first is going to represent no change in your base rate, but what we need to get that variable rate to, to achieve that $7.5 million revenue. So as you can see, we need to add about a dollar to our variable rate here if we're going to maintain that 3,000 gallons with our base rate. And then if you look at the bottom row of this chart right here, this shows you how it's going to affect each of your different usage strata for your customers. So obviously, the customers that are using less than 1,000 gallons a month that they're getting for free are not going to be affected at all. Their bill will not rise even a penny. And then even your 1,000, 2,000 customers, 2,000 gallon customers, they're only going to see about a dollar increase. Where this does affect you is your, is your bigger users. They're going to see about a 30% increase, we estimate, on their bill each month. While that's less people, these are obviously the people that are, that are providing most of your revenue each month. So, and that's something to consider. This is how that rate would compare to others, so as you can see, we're still well below the average here. Only about $42 for, for your cost of 5,000 gallons of water.
In a perfect world, it would probably be that midpoint, right?
Right, right. Perfect world, we'd be right at that 48. Now, obviously, this average is changing as, as it rises up, but I believe the average prior to this was $47, so we're still well, well within that. And I believe Terry said that his, their main goal here is obviously being future-focused, but also providing the best possible service without breaking our customers' bank. And as you can see, we're, we're still well, well within that here. Option two, this represents another dollar increase to your base rate here, represents 50 cents added to your water base rate, 50 cents added to your sewer base rate. In order to get to 7.5 there, we'll need about a $4.15 variable rate charge. As you can see, this will increase everybody's bill. Now your thousand dollars, your thousand, less than 1,000 gallon customer can see about a dollar increase, obviously, because they're going to have a dollar increase on their base rate here. So this is a little bit more equitable than the first one. You'll see, you know, everybody see an increase, but not everybody will see the same increase. And again, this is a little bit higher, you have $42.20 for your cost of 5,000 gallons here, but still well below the average. Finally, this is what I like to call the most equitable, and this represents the same percentage increase on everyone's bill across the board. It's a base rate of $10 and a variable rate of $4.05. But as you can see down here, everybody will see, we estimate about a 25% increase on their monthly bill. That represents about $2 for your, for your less than 1,000 gallon customer, obviously because it's a $2 base rate increase, and about $72 for your, for your 10,000 gallon customers.
And the 10,000 gallon are our commercial customers.
They're your commercial ones, yeah.
I don't think I've ever used 10,000 gallons.
I don't think I've ever used 10,000.
Right, right, right. This is, this is still the 3,000 gallons. All of these have included the 1,000 gallons. And finally, at the request of, of Terry and the team, I've included what it would look like if we, well, sorry, this is $42.40 for, for your cost of 5,000 gallons here. And finally, I've included what it would look like if we removed that 3,000 gallons and included the same base rate of $8. And as you can see, our variable rate would be much, much less if we, if we wanted to achieve that $7.5 million revenue and take away that 3,000, about $3.70 for variable rate.
And that's where we were before we, we instituted the new rates two years ago.
Right, you, you were at, to believe us...
265.
Right, 265, and then...
7.7.
7.7.
7.7, so 6 cents on sewer. I think it changed the variable price, plus 1,000.
And this is interesting because it, it affects your larger customers and your smaller customers the least, where you really see the effect is in the middle there. Just because those are the people where that 1,000 represents, you know, a larger portion of their bill, but not all of their bill.
Right.
So this would raise it the highest, the cost of your 5,000 gallons the highest, to about $45, but still obviously, you know, even below that $47 average that we're at right now that we wouldn't be with, with this. So, so those are, those are the options that we came up with. You know, it's, it's really up to y'all in, in terms of, of how you want this to be distributed, who, who needs to bear the burden of, of this. I don't think it's going to be considerable for the vast majority of your customers, no matter what you decide here. So I think that goal of $7.5 million is, is very achievable without, without most of the customers going to have a big pinch here.
And that goal, if everyone recalls, well, one of the things we committed to two years ago is moving this so that we could begin those infrastructure improvements and maintain them as the, as this board and the next board and the next board seeks to take care of that infrastructure that is going to keep on aging, but to put us in a position so that Pleasant Acres and then Green Oaks and Rolling Hills and Oktobah Gardens and any, any Long Matter, the next ones that...
Long Matter, yeah.
Well, I'm just, you know, that, that whole rolling of, of those improvements can continue, and we didn't know what we didn't know because we didn't have the data until, or we didn't have a model until two years ago, and now this two-year opportunity to refine that puts us in a better position to understand what it is we will need in order to keep that, those improvements going. Is that fair as, as well as to plan for the water, the well, not tower, the well, that is going to be necessary in order to also take us into the next 50, 75 years?
Yeah, we, I think, Mayor, we talked about the overall capital plans, you know, that's exactly right. That, system optimization, there's a lot of capital improvement to look at. And I think Nelson alluded to it, when we did the first model, we, we were monitoring it real close, but with that 1,000 gallons back, that amounts to about $700.
Yeah, it's about, we do the 3,000 gallons.
So then this gap, when we started seeing revenue, the revenue became support of what our plan is for capital, and so we're trying to get back to that.
Okay. In, in the least painful way possible. Now, there is nothing, there's nothing for the board to do at this point in time, but we wanted to put this out there so people could begin to think about how they wanted to move forward, because we need to do this in order to be able to continue what we've put in place or what we've, what we've planned for. And so I want to make sure that we have plenty of time to think about it and consider which option, or if there's another option that might be something that we want to look at. But y'all can look at that, it'll be online, or be available online for, for that, and we'll be taking it up in the next month or year.
After your, what you said now, it's the method, but the timing fits into the plan too.
Right.
We've talked earlier about impact on customers, real sensitive to that, typically the fall or winter, like we did last time, I think that's when we picked October for the last change, seemed to be the best time to fit in as an option, but here again, something for the board to consider.
Okay. All right, does it, excuse me, I was going to ask a question, so go ahead, Alden, sister.
And ideally, we would make this decision in time for y'all to develop your fiscal '21 budget.
That's, that's exactly right. At the same time, pick a date that give us time to get everything in place, communicate out so we can make sure it's all done smoothly.
Obviously, this is something that Dr. Barrett and I will continue to work with y'all on. If there's any other options or tweaking that you want to see us do, we're going to have you do for us.
Okay. Alden, let me, let me go around for him just a second. Alden Walker? Any questions?
No ma'am, thank you for the presentation, gentlemen, and I, I think this gives us more to, to, to look at and try to interpret and dissect these numbers and figure out a, a plan to move forward, so thank you.
Thank you. All right. Alden Beatty, sorry.
Mr. Magoo, the assumptions, the assumptions y'all making are based on us having students back and having that, would be proof for us to look at assumptions, if, in a worst-case scenario, if, if, I mean, we're going to get students back, we just don't know how many we're going to get back and how long it's going to take to get back 21,000 or 22,000 students. us to get back 21,000 or 22,000 students.
We'd be happy to. I would estimate that it wouldn't change that much. I think it would be about, because this is...
Because they're all over a lot of them camps, they're in both Hampton Hamlets, so they're not paying a water bill, are they?
This is still with the 5,000, this is with a 5% drop across the board. Now, I think that's very conservative. I think if we wanted to see worst-case scenario, I think we could look at maybe a 6% to 7% drop in usage for the entire year.
But your assumptions on increasing those rate amounts were based on not the 5% drop or on 5% lower.
They were on the 5%.
On the lower years ago. Explain us one more time what you consider to be the most equitable of these five options.
In my opinion, the most equitable would be a 25% increase across the board for each customer. Now, I think the happy medium here, and the one that I would most likely suggest would be this option right here, would be a 50% increase on either, on both water and sewer, and then a variable rate of $4.15.
And that would give us the, or which one?
That would give you $7.55 million.
All right, but 40, what's the rate, the average rate on cross-board rate?
Cross-the-board rate would be $42.20 for 5,000 gallons.
All right, so we still have $4.50 on that.
Yes, sir.
Alderman Vaughn?
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, Alderman, sister.
I'd like to speak to him's question about the conservatism about the model and students being in town, that sort of thing. I think what we may be seeing some of this year, before we go back to a more normal situation, is that as the university adjusts how they house students, we may have more students pushed out into the community. So that 5% drop may well be very conservative.
Okay. Well, I'd be more than happy to, you know, play around with the numbers even more and get to a number that y'all are comfortable with.
Well, and we will continue to, as we do this, hopefully, the next board will continue to model and look at it again, but it may very well be that for right now, 5% is a reasonable conservative number, since we don't know what we don't know. Okay, all right. If there are no other questions, thank you so much, Mr....
Thank you. You made an excellent point, and we've actually talked with Nelson and Jason. Now that we've got a good model, it fits right into the financial plan. Y'all most are monitoring every month as you go forward to give the board and everybody else a good picture, you know, is the model performing or can we make adjustments? And it creates confidence in where we're going to be going. That's what we're trying to avoid is just a real big surprise out there not being able to adjust.
Okay.
Does $7.5 billion get you into capital expenditure range? That get you replacement of most of our really old aging infrastructure in town?
Over time, I think that's what I would say.
So we had $7.5 billion right now, we could just go to, but that would get most of our, really what we call, old failing?
For $7.5 million, we would think that would support capital projects that really we've tied.
Tied, yeah.
The next time, yeah. Yeah. But I think past that, ultimately, to your point, as we go into this, there's probably going to be another group equally out there that we need to address as well as the rail or infrastructure programs or other areas just because of the age.
These are revenues.
These are sustainable. What we're trying to do is minimize so that we're not bouncing, have something of confidence that we can build capital plans on, that can support that capital investment.
And we don't have to come back on a regular basis and ask for...
What was the length of debt service on these revenue bonds? What time of the bond?
12 years. Revenue bond. On the water side, yeah. There were 20 years, but that was by the wastewater treatment.
Yeah.
Primarily.
To date, you've not actually issued bonds related to this infrastructure replacement, right?
But with some of the, with the $7.5 million, that does include some of these further out things that we, or does it? Like I took some of those projects outside of, I know, Green Oaks and Rolling Hills, but past that, it's the $7.5 does not.
It would come out of this.
It would include it. That's the intention, to keep going.
Primarily for wastewater plant, that we've got disc rotters that were installed there and then solid project, and anything left over to reuse, but it would be a small amount comparable behind the investment.
Oh, yes, but...
I was going to say, as time goes forward, what you should be seeing in these areas where you've done your work is less repair and maintenance cost, which should allow you to keep up with future capital expansions, even without looking too much...
That is why we're trying to trip over so that we're not fixing things. We're just trying to maintain it and ensuring that it functioned right. But it's going to take a while. As we said earlier, when we started out discussing this, if you looked at the infrastructure in Starkville Water, it were, a large percentage of that really fits in that 50 to 70 years. It's served well, and it will for a few more years. We just got to get a projection of the head of the power.
But the way we structure our bond debt is that we have bond roll, we were issuing bonds for certain prices, bond rolling, bond debt rolling up, we started with paying bonds up, retiring, and then we're issuing more, that kind of thing. So we don't go out and just incur, we're not occurring like 7, 8 million, 10 million, one whack in bond debt.
I think, and correct me if I'm wrong here, was that the plan was the working capital that you accumulate would cover most of these infrastructure improvements, that there wouldn't be any...
So this would not be bonded, we'd just accumulate money for projects.
Right. Because you can only manage so much work at one time anyway, and if we have...
Well, this is the thing, on state like, can we put money up? Can we charge a rate that allows us to accumulate money where we get substantially above what it costs us running that enterprise plant?
I would say this is a cost of operations. That's really...
But I mean, yeah, but there was always, it used to be some questions whether that's not necessarily a cost of operation.
There's a limit, but if you have a plan and you're constantly rolling that money up...
That's justified.
This is not, this is not just to build working capital. Sit there, this is working capital that's being put to use.
Well, and that's why it's so important for the future boards, for us to have a plan for the future boards to be able to follow. So that's the...
And we're here for this year on our response to issue that the rates were due. But the venue is when that's not the case, and what this has mitigated some of their risk, if that's, you know, you always have the best options, you put that out there, but it doesn't put you in the bad.
Okay. All right, thank you. If there are no more questions on that, we'll go to the agenda and take a look and see. Alderman Walker, since you're kind of remote, I want to make sure I don't leave you out. Did you have any other questions on this?
No, ma'am, I'm good.
All right, thank you. All right, our agenda comments, I have no idea what we'll comment about, but I'm sure we'll find something to talk about. I know that, and I thank Alderman Vaughn for coming out this past weekend, we had the football camp. Jeffrey Simmons was very pleased with that camp, and I think I was kind of pushing him to say, "Come back." And I wanted Alderman Vaughn to push him to come back, and I think he was very amenable to that as a possibility. So it was really a good camp. I'll try to remember to talk about that one as well.
I know it's a big man.
We've got two public hearings. There's your Amber Alert. We've got two public hearings, and obviously, those will go on with, one of these is included, the second public hearing on the Temporary Leisure and Entertainment District ordinance, with the consideration, this will be the opportunity for us to adopt it. And so all of that paperwork should be in there. We have a verbal, that's not the word I want, we have a narrative of the streets that are impacted, we have the map itself, and then we have the ordinance, which should all be in the package. So, and it'll be online for those who are interested in pulling it up. And then the other public hearing is going to be housekeeping matters on making our code of ordinances match what we did associated with the parades and the First Amendment right of holding a parade without us coming back to the board. And so we're just making that language marry up. Under mayor's business, everyone has visited, or almost everyone has visited, Mr. Brandon Dougherty, and he continues to express interest. I have put up, he's going to video in with us on Tuesday night. Alderman Carver was the only Alderman who was unable to visit with Mr. Dougherty. And so this is an opportunity for him to visit with him via the video, and then considering his potential for hire will be the second item on that agenda. So that'll give us an opportunity to visit with him one more time, and if the board so wishes, make that hire. So then under board business, we didn't have anything, and I'm assuming no one still has anything board business-wise that we should have. So code enforcement, we have, we're trying to get our lots that have overgrown yards and overgrown vacant lots back into compliance. So this is part of what this is, and we've identified, we're trying to do them in clusters. So we've identified it, identified it, we've identified, what, I believe these are four of them here? One, two, five of them, five of them. So, and we will look to making those on the list so we can then go mow them and take care of them, and then we'll put them on the tax, tax lien, whatever that official phrase would be there, right, Mr. Latimer?
Correct.
Okay, so this is our, this is our way of doing that and getting that handled, and if the board is inclined, folks, we could, this is just calling for a public hearing, so if we could do a consent on that particular item?
Yeah, consent.
Okay.
Let me ask you that one more, Mayor. Do we, what, where are we on the question? The property on...
He has appealed.
He's appealed to the Mississippi Supreme Court, and so there's going to be a delay to let that pan out.
So we also have a single applicant for the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. That would seem to be worthy of consent if everyone's in agreement.
Consent.
Okay, thank you. And then we have three, no, we have two final plats, I'm sorry. And I have not looked at them, so I have no idea. From my perspective, I would assume we would need to take those up and give us time to look at them over the weekend, and if someone wants to put them on consent, that would be an opportunity. Mr.... Dr. Kemp?
Yes.
Is there anything about either one of these items that you need to share with us that might be a little different from our normal final plat?
I believe most of the issues has been resolved.
They have?
Just as a matter of them completing their infrastructure improvements and getting to the supplemental agreements.
Okay. Well, I know we've added an encroachment agreement and maintenance agreement at the end of that, at Mr. Latimer's suggestion, so any things associated with that, Mr. Latimer, that...
No, those are additions to the plating, and so that's why they're listed in there. If the board wanted to take it on consent, we would have those items enumerated in the agenda.
Okay.
Those are agreements for the maintenance and oversight pedestrian bridges that are associated with the Vista project.
All right, okay, all right. Anyone have any thoughts about that? Okay. We have a final plat for subdividing and reconfiguring two lots that are at North Jackson. Is this North Jackson in Kreix? Is that that project?
Yes.
Okay, has he met, also met requirements?
Yes, she still need to complete the same possibility of improvement, but she will provide it as a bond. So the second condition, if you bond, shall be available for us, and she will give any support in this project.
Okay, all right, thank you. And the final one, I'm not familiar with, do we have someone who is now willing to take that house?
No, the person they give up, and I had a discussion with the FDA agent, and they said they just need an MOA signed up, and if we feel that we don't want to go for it, there would be no penalty, so...
Okay, so this is...
Keeping those...
This is somewhat of a housekeeping matter as well, so consent for that? Anyone have an objection to that? Okay, thank you. We'll show that one as consent. All right, under engineering, Edward has the lower bid, the bid for the 2020 street improvement project, and I found my sheet, Edward, but if you want to run over it real quick, just run over it real quick, what the streets...
That's a way to listen to this board and choose, it'll be included in the E packet. It's the same list that the board improved back in June. It's surprising, about five miles, supporting the overlays, those that were included in authority for reading. Listening, of course, we made a few tweaks of that list, if you remember back in June, mostly due to ongoing construction, for example, up at Green Oaks, that's about to happen, utility related, so those were, some of those were delayed a year. But it's the same list. We had three bids that came in this week, really competitive bids. Our asphalt price is $101 a ton, which is only $2 higher than it was last year. So I feel pretty good about where we are, we're within budget, and our hope is to get started early to the middle of the year.
Okay, and so that one is included in the packet?
The E packet.
The E packet?
It will be, I got it just through this meeting.
Okay, all right, fine. Well, I dug through all the papers on my desk and finally found mine, so good deal. Thank you. So it'll be, it'll be easy for folks to view, both board members as well as anyone that's interested in what that project, what those projects are going to be for this year. Okay, thank you. Any issue with consent on those? Okay. All right, we have the claims docket, and then acceptance of the financials, and financials is usually something that's consent for folks. Mr. Nav isn't with us. Mr. Nav is not with us. Hmm, okay. These are replacement individuals. These, we're authorization to hire entry-level firefighters and police officers, all those are replacement folks, the folks that we have lost. Sewer operator, that's the same, Mr. Kemp?
Yes.
Okay. And sewer maintenance worker, that also is the same? Okay. And Mr. Burnett is inspector, that's the same. And then the other is two part-time customer service representatives to handle all of the incoming that we're going to be getting as the students come back into town. So I would think that all of those would be good consent items unless I hear an objection.
I'd just like to say that it is our intention to bring our furlough employees back. These are positions who were, which were frozen as we were going through our budget adjustments to try to meet the uncertainty of these pandemic times, and so we're now filling those frozen positions.
That's what I, we're not going to have these till we bring our people back, right?
Well, we'll be bringing our people back at the end of this month.
This won't be going to have these people.
Make it effective.
Yes.
Okay, make it effective, and when we get out, bang, we're out.
Yes.
Okay.
IT, we've got approval of an agreement with an addendum for the 30-day test of the body camera. It should be, no issue there, I assume, Mr. Latimer?
It's good to go.
All right, consent on that. Parks, this is the RFPs for our field lighting, and Mr. DeQuilla is on the phone with us if there are any questions, but this is what he had indicated to us he was going to bring forward at this point in time. And then also is the RFP committee, which is Alderman Walker, Nick Callahan, and then Mr. Kemp would serve on, oh, there he is, Nav, okay. Mr. Kemp would serve on that one. So any issues with either one of these as we move forward? Would you consent on those two items? And then the other one is the lowest and best bid for pipe and supply for a trench box assembly, which Mr. Kemp tells me is the, something we've never had, but it is the trench box that would keep the walls of a trench secure and stay in place while we do